We are right at seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
And Mayor Bain.
Here. Let's invite everyone to rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item this evening is presentation and oath of office of Officer Tyler Schimmelman, and Chief Peterson will get us kicked off.
Yeah, Mayor, city council members, community members, and guests, good evening. Tonight, I am beyond pleased to be introducing you to our newest police officer, Taylor Schimmelman. Taylor, if you can come up here. Taylor is here today with family, friends, and coworkers, and she will be reciting the oath of office with Mayor Mara Bain. Taylor obtained her Bachelor of Arts degree in criminal justice from Concordia University. She completed her law enforcement skills program at Hennepin Technical College in 2020, and was hired by the Meeker County Sheriff's Office, where she worked as a deputy sheriff prior to her hire with the Forest Lake Police Department. Taylor started working for the Forest Lake Police Department on May 1st, and just recently finished the field training program and is now on solo patrol. Mayor Bain, could you do us the honor of swearing in? Taylor? And I'll have you. And Grandpa.
Officer Schimmelman, please raise your hand when you repeat after me.
I, Taylor Schimmelman.
I, Taylor Schimmelman.
You solemnly swear. You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
And faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge the duties of police officer.
Within and within the state of, um, city of Forest Lake and state of Minnesota.
Within the city of Forest Lake and state of Minnesota.
Congratulations.
Officer Taylor Schimmelman. Thanks, uh, guests, the officers here, and others personally, I appreciate it. You guys go upstairs, and there's some refreshments up there for you. So always take a minute break, if that's okay?
Absolutely. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we have before you an agenda this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
Motion.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. Our next item is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of their choosing. And is there anyone signed up for open forum this evening? No one signed up? Is there anyone that would like to speak for open forum this evening? All right, bring the meeting back to council and council for your consideration or consent agenda items 7A through 7H. I am open for a motion or any changes to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through H.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening is our only regular agenda item, and that is the Hidden Creek grading permit. And in Abby's absence, Amanda, you're taking it. Excellent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, council, so, um, under a separate cover, it should be on your dais, is a grading permit, which should be the very, I believe, last stapled page on the document. And then the, um, the first pages are the grading permit terms and conditions. If you recall, at the last council meeting, we had applicant for Hidden Creek come before the council and ask for some modifications to what would be maybe the normal process for approving development. And as part of that, um, they have asked for this grading permit, which will allow them to begin mass grading on the site before they have final plat approval. The reason that this is coming before you with a little bit more documentation and a little more formally than it would normally be, um, is, is because this is not common for us to issue a grading permit with sort of this magnitude of work going into it. They'll be doing mass grading on the site as well as the mass grading for, um, the road, the Headwaters Parkway, which is obvious, is property that the city owns, so we have to, um, agree to that, um, grading work. The permit conditions, um, that are in this document are sort of to cover the city in the event that, for some reason, the applicant is not able to finish their grading work or something were to happen, and we, we do have a letter of credit that we are taking $60,000 to be able to stabilize the site, should they start something and not be able to finish it. Um, and, you know, sort of those sorts of protections, as well as some general rules that we would require them to follow. Um, so what I am looking for you tonight, if there's no questions, would be just a motion to approve grading permit, grading permit number PZ01306, and that would do it.
Thank you, Amanda. Um, a couple of quick clarifying questions as council considers the motion before us and the packet before us. Um, first, you mentioned this is coming before us in this level of formality because it is a bit, did you say, out of sequence? Is there, um, typically, so, could you just remind council on where we are in this development plan and just specifically call out kind of maybe what's out of sequence from what we would typically see? Just, I just want to make sure I understand and that council understands.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, council. Uh, so typically, uh, so in this particular situation, Hidden Creek has a preliminary plat approval that they got last winter, although based on conversations with them at, you know, in the last month or so, they want to break the development down into a phased development. Um, and so they wouldn't be plating all of the lots. It would be this initial phase of, of 22 lots, I believe, or 20 lots, whatever the number is, um, which requires that they adjust the final plat to reflect a phased development versus plating all of the lots at once. Um, typically, with a grading permit, we allow grading permits for, you know, small projects up to large projects. Small projects would be approved administratively. Council would never see those. Um, but in a situation like this, the code requires that council approves these grading permits, um, where they, where there is not like an outstanding development agreement that would already have been executed for the project. Um, I think that answers your question?
And that does answer my question. And then just a point of clarification, given the conversations that have taken place between staff and the developer, is it staff's recommendation that council would approve the grading permit tonight? I just wanted to make sure that that was, yes?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Council, other questions related to the grading permit? I know we had a considerable workshop session on this protected, projected project last, um, meeting, and so just wanted to, any other questions as we consider?
Just a quick one. I don't, the $60,000, to put that, is that something, Ryan, that you worked on or came up with a price? Was that, or Dave?
Mayor, City Council, so their contractors submitted a bid for the work that they'll be to do the entire grading onsite restoration and some other miscellaneous things. We took a portion of those bid items and then, uh, some other miscellaneous things. To create the letter of credit, in the event that, what's it say, worst-case scenario, like project goes bankrupt, right, so it sits, we'd be able to come and shape it to drain, so there's not any major holes left, like if a kid went through there on a four-wheeler. And really to get the site reestablished, all the turf registration, so we'd have funds to come in and seed the site if we needed to, if it was still, you know, uh, all graded and bare. So those, basically what, what it is, I think, was their original contract somewhere around $430,000. So, it's basically just to make the site safe and restore any restoration that's needed.
Any other questions? Ready for a motion, if anyone's ready to make one?
I would move that council approved grading permit P as in Paul Z01306 as presented in our packet.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Good luck with your project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that being the end of our action agenda, we are going to move into a workshop session. And just a quick reminder that the, this is intended to be a working session of council. This is the first, well, this is maybe a follow-up. We've had a number of budget discussions already, which has been part of our consideration of our 10-year plan. Um, this is maybe the first specific conversation related to the 2024 budget, but is a series of workshop sessions that we will be having between now through September and then rolling into the end of the year. Um, tonight specifically, we're going to see a first look at projected budget for the 2024 utility funds. Everything that we discuss tonight is open to changes. Anything that requires official action, which in this case would be our consideration of the preliminary levy, will take place and will be voted on in council in September. Um, but until then, it is completely in a working session. So with that, Kevin, I'll kick it over to you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we will be looking at the city's, uh, utility funds with compromise of the water, sewer, and surface water management fund. I'll go through each fund one by one and take any questions on those that you may have, and then also we can answer any questions you have at the end of those as well. Uh, just to start out with, um, with these funds, they are non-tax levy supported, so there is, these funds have no impact on the tax levy. They are supported by the user chargers at residency on their, uh, utility bills quarterly. So with that, uh, just go over, remind council, go over some things along with the budget. This is also the 10-year plan for these utility funds. So what that is, is identifying the capital needs of these utility funds in the next 10 years and identifies a funding source that goes along with those as well. So when we have, um, equipment that comes due, projects that come up, not only are we aware of those, but we have a plan for how those will be funded in the future. And it's really a great plan, and all these 10, all these capital plans are really a great planning tool for the city. It's not just looking at the current year of the budget, but it's looking long-term in the next three years, five years, and even 10 years, so we can see a better picture of where each of these funds is going and what maybe needs to be done now to set this, these funds up for success in the future. And also with these, uh, rating agencies, when the city issues debt, there's a lot of rate, rating agency calls and things that they look at, and they really like to see that the city has established, uh, 10-year capital plans. So, um, we're being fiscally responsible in planning for the future and not just looking at the current year. Uh, with these utility funds, um, there's a target cash balance that you're going to see with these. And what that is, is just identifying where we want those cash balances in the funds to be to cover operating expense, operating expenses. So, looking at cash, we're going to look at the next year's operating expenditures and want 50% of that on hand as relating to operations. The next part of that is the capital items. Are we planning on paying these, for these items with cash? And if so, we want that cash on hand in the previous year to fund the next year's capital purchases. Or if they are going to be funded with some other sources, whether that be debt or grants or any other related revenue items, then those are taken out of the equation because those will be given cash when we issue that debt or get that grant, for example. These funds also need to cover the required debt, debt payments that they have, current and future projections as we look for capital needs. So making sure that there's enough cash on hand to cover the next year's principal and interest payments on those, uh, debt payments. So we'll go over that a little bit more as we get into each fund. So in front of you, I did put, uh, plans in front of you. We're going to start with the water fund. Um, a couple highlights with the water fund is that the 2024 rates are currently approved at a 6% increase over 2023. We have a three-year, uh, rate. Um, rates were approved last year for 2023, 2024, and 2025 as a 6% increase each year. There is no change from that, uh, increase in this year's plan as we relooked at everything from what was presented last year. Couple other assumptions being made. Wages and benefits are, uh, projected to increase at 3%. That mostly follows the union contracts. And then other operating expenses are, uh, projected to increase at 2% annually. So with that, we will go on your, in front of you is the water fund, which lays out the next 10 years. So we're going to focus on that first. So down at the bottom of the first page, you can see that target cash balance line item. So what we're doing here is looking at, calculating out what should be the target cash in that fund related to where we are currently at. And as you can see with that, with that 6% increase annually, with the, also the projected, uh, increases in operating expenditures, this fund is maintaining that target cash balance and able to fund the related items. The one thing to note in 2030, where you see that going in the red, that is related to a couple, uh, significant projects, which are on the second page of your packet in the capital improvement plan, which mostly relates to a new wastewater treatment plant and two wells. This is really dependent on growth of the city, where this could be, this could be done this year, or it could be pushed out two, two, three, five years, depending on, on the need for that. So looking at a perspective of this being about seven or eight years down the road, it wasn't feasible to look at planning that we need to, uh, look at rates and possibly increase that to cover the debt payments associated with that. So it's something to be aware of as we look at this annually, just to make sure that we know that there's some needs coming up that might be significant here, and that's what the purpose of this plan is. Identify it, know it's out there. What do we need to be doing now? Is there something we need to be doing now? Or just be more aware of it and reevaluate it again next year? Uh, so that's where that stands.
Kevin, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
You mentioned that it's dependent upon growth of the city. Given a project of that size, when do we need to kind of make? If that project is going to happen in 2030, when do we need to make that determination? Is that two years before? What's the runway for that decision point?
The decision point for looking at rates or when we need to build that?
No, looking at the actual needing that project to be, I mean, because this would be, this would assume that those, that project is going in the ground 2030. Is that right?
I would say that would be either '28 or '29. Uh, first, you'd have to know plans and specs.
So we're about five years, five years of development.
Yeah, the large amount of the capital is the 10 million in the 29. You should probably know a year before that, if that's going to be necessary, to begin plans and specs, or you can start, start in '29 with plans and specs and push it out. So '28, '29, possibly '30 late, at the latest, I would say, would be accurate.
And current trajectory, is there a high probability it's needed, or would you say?
I don't think we can, I don't think we can forecast that because we don't have the amount of, we don't have a lot of development at this point.
So we'll continuously review annual pumping records, so we'll know, you know, our projection, where we're going based on growth applications, rooftops, higher density and stuff like that. So, I mean, we're going to know within a five-year window. Yes, we're going to get there. You know, we might have a bunch of applications still coming in with that five-year window, and you start into planning, the financing, and the plans and specs and stuff like that, but you're going, you're going to be able to see it. It's going to not just pop out of nowhere all of a sudden, boom, we just had 10,000 more rooftops in the city, right? You know, or it'd be less than that, but, so we'll be able to see those trends and annually review the pumping records.
Your, your earlier marker will be the, um, storage as well, the million gallons of storage, you know, either by a water tower or underground storage. Once that triggers, then you know you're, you know, you're at capacity with what you have right now, that you have to add additional storage, and then your next step with that would be have to make another plant, because what you're making isn't going to, you know, hit your population. So your good marker would be the, you know, once we start talking about we need that new water storage tank, that would, that would mean that we had an increase that we can't support our current system, that, you know, that'll start trending towards a plant. So it's all kind of staged out.
Also remember, we're very active in that water efficiency grant program with washing machines, toilets, dishwashers, and irrigation components that, you know, especially the older, um, people on city water that have the older appliances or the irrigation stuff that's, you know, through this rebate program, the grant that we have, they get a portion of that back. So that's still actively going. And within the last legislation, uh, appointment money, there, they can want to continue that program too. So that's been very active here lately. Actually, it's been really good this last two quarters.
Thank you.
I interrupted you.
No, that's told, that's just fine. All very good questions and comments. Uh, so with the, so that's my last comment on the water fund. And when you see, if you look on page two, all the equipment is being funded with cash. When they, when we need a new pickup truck, we are having cash on hand to pay for those. Um, but with all the capital improvement plans that are listed there, the majority of that amount will be needed to be financed through issuance of debt. That's the current plan on that. We will look at the structure of that, where, where we're looking. We just recently talked with Alors about just looking at our projections with that, just how we can kind of best use that when we bond for that. But right now, the plan is for the majority of those expenses in those, in that capital improvement plan section to be financed, uh, through the issuance of bonds. And then the, uh, corresponding principal and interest payments are included in the plan to come up with that target, uh, cash balance as well to make, to make those payments. Any questions on the water fund? Otherwise, we're head to the, keep going to the sewer fund.
I, I do have a question. This, the previous council approved the, these rates in the 6%, but is that, I mean, was that the time comparable to what other cities our size are doing? Or how did that number come up, come about? Just curious.
So the, that number came about as looking at our current rate structure and looking at where's, where's the ci, where's our city need to go? What are, what are, what is the city of Forest Lake's specific needs as it relates to that water fund? So looking at keeping that rate increase level, just like with the tax level, we don't want ups and downs, where it's going big increase one year, down the next, these peaks and valleys. Where's that consistent number to be at to kind of get to where we need to go? And that's where we settled at, at the 6%. Didn't it specifically look at what other cities are doing as that, as those numbers can be skewed based on what their needs are and what their current assessments are of those funds themselves? But if that's information you like, I could reach out to some surrounding cities and go pull that information.
Also aligns with what needs to be funded in the capital improvement plan. That's why we did such a long extensive looking out in the future what we need. So it's not a surprise when we get there, instead of having a 15% increase one year, you can slowly make it up to fund that projects that are coming that are needed for the infrastructure and the growth that's identified in the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, and that, that makes sense. I just, maybe what the base, where it started, where, you know, comparable to other cities, it'd be interesting if you could.
The city did do a water study, and that study supported then some of the rates that are, had, were proposed and discussed at that time. And then the, the last thing to be done and completed was the capital improvement plan, long-term one.
I believe that capital improvement plan was done back in 2017 or 2000?
The water study was done in 2018. That's when there were pretty high recommendations at that point. I think 15% and, because we had let the water fund get in such a bad position that we needed to raise rates to keep it solvent. So yeah, we did raise rates. That was the base. That's where it started, 2018 and '19. And we've been looking at it every year since, and like, um, both Kevin and Ryan have said, now it's the 10-year plan and keeping this whole thing solvent and taking into all considerations everything that we're going to need in the 10 years. Will the rates change in the future? Sure, they'll change somehow, either up or down. We'll adjust depending on how the performance of the, of, of the fund goes. That's why it's important to have 10 years to look at, and that's why it's important for every year the council needs to look at this and ask staff for an update.
As, as I recall, even prior to 2018, there was a 6% raise that never was implemented.
Correct.
And that's where we, we're so far behind. And so.
Part of, part of a recommended increase never happened for whatever reason.
Yep.
And different requirements come on, you know, that aren't anticipated. You know, some stuff at the treatment plants that's been required, uh, the lead replacement. You know, there's some grants out there right now, and we're chasing some of that stuff. But, again, that's newer stuff that wasn't talked about even back in '18, that short of time period, already that are, already being addressed in this CIP too.
Thanks.
Just curious, how many active wells do we have today?
Three.
Three active wells.
Starting the drill number four next week.
Just note on that, though, it's going to be called well six and seven, the, you know, the other wells, because they go, you know, once one's decommissioned, they never replace its number. So that's, just don't get confused on that.
Like a retired baseball player.
Okay, on to the sewer fund. So there's a couple notes on this fund as well before we dig into the numbers. Uh, the 2024 rates in this fund are currently approved at a 5% increase. Uh, looking at a, uh, change in capital improvement requirements, we're looking at, uh, proposing that rate increase in the sewer fund to be only a 3% increase over the next 10 years. And I'll get into some more of those details on why that changed and why, and going back to our previous comments, that's why it's so important to look at this annually every six months to make sure that these funds are tracking how they're supposed to, whether for the good or the bad, and make those necessary, necessary adjustments. And just like the water fund, the wages and benefits are proposed to increase at 3%. And then the other expenses are projected to increase at, at 2%. So going to sewer fund, I'm just going to jump to the second page just to highlight why, the, the major reason why the shift from the 5% increase, which was proposed last year, changed it to 3%. When you look at the first line item on the second page under the capital improvement plan, uh, is lift station and force main projects. Uh, back in 2022, it was projected that these would be about that $900,000 figure every other year. But working, um, Ryan and Dave said that they could go every third year for that. So that was a significant change when we're looking at projecting out what these rates would be, because this fund is operating with being able to pay for these type of improvements with available cash on hand. The only debt that this fund is looking at issuing in the next 10 years is for their, this share of the public works facility, if that, if and when that happens. And that's currently on, on the books for 2026 and 2027. So that's where, look, where you have those changes in those capital improvement plans and the projection when that's going to happen. Can't significantly change the outlook of that. So that, that was a major shift from there, and then there was also some decreases in that reconstruction projects line item for the amount that would be required for sewer related to those projects in those years. So with that, going, bouncing back to the first page with the 3% annual increase, you can see that the target cash balance is right where it needs to be. It does dip a little bit in 2030 and 2031, but again, going to that that's seven, eight years down the road with no significant, uh, issues or things to be concerned about. Dipping this a little bit below in those years isn't anything to be worried about in, in for the 2024 budget.
One, one of the large, um, one of the large expense items there is the metro sewer service charge. How do you project what those charges are going to be, or how far in advance do we know what those are going to be with any level of certainty and?
So that 2024 number is a preliminary budget number that has been provided to Met Council. Uh, Dave, and correct me if I run, but we usually get that number around May or June. And that number, from my experience, is usually very solid, meaning it's a preliminary number. So that number you see in the 2024 budget of $1,702,000. So that number you see in the 2024 budget of $1,7023.71, that, that should be the number in there. And those numbers are all based on what the Met Council's budget needs to be, on Forest Lake's flows, and all sorts of different factors. So the city of Forest Lake might see, for example, a 3% increase, but another community in the Met Council might see a 7% increase because it just varies based on flows. So can we project that necessarily going forward? Not necessarily. It says we built in an inflator in there that we know is a significant amount. But that's where you look at that, that target cash and an over/under. We're sitting at a really good spot where if we do, if there is a significant increase in that for one year, the city will be able to adjust in a timely manner if needed for that. But there's nothing to indicate that that's going to be jumping significantly here.
Is there a, a history of just kind of some, a, a level performance of those costs that gives some confidence? Or did those historically jump all over? I just asked the question because it's a significant component that we have, I think, virtually no control over, right? Ryan?
Well, one thing that the city did back in the day is that some pump inspection program, and it significantly reduced, reduced the INI. And, you know, a lot of the projects we already have in the CIP that we're working on, even like North Shore Circle, and we replaced all that sewer in there and took out two lift stations and replaced with one, we cut the INI down that area a lot. The lift station project that's going on too, and some of the scope of work that's changing, some of the other sewer rehab projects, we're attacking manholes, but we're also doing the manhole, or the lining, lining projects. So now we're reducing the INI, which is less flow going through that flow meter, which then is going to equal out proportion growth versus the INI. So if we can, can continue to control INI, we'll be able to go downwards, but our growth is going up. So, you know.
INI infiltration and?
Inflow.
Inflow.
So to, so to answer your Met Council, in like 2021, it was like 1.4 million. Then last year went down to 1.3, and then this year went up to 1.6. So it's, but what they give you in May, they used, probably five years ago, they switched it to this before, they used to give you your final number in like October or November, just in time for it to be too late. So now they go, they switch their calendar year. So when they give you that, that number, that is your budget for 2024. So starting January 1, they, they divide that up by 12, and that's what your bill is. So it's all about your flows and the, the total flow. I mean, it's, you take the percentage of your flow divided by their total flow, divided by their budget, and that's what it is. So if their budget goes up, but your flows went down, you're, you still may go up. It just depends on your kind of, at their mercy of their budget.
And just some other, just random background info because of that line down specifically, there's been some discussion, well, the city should have their own plant and blah, 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 right? Well, in today's dollars, we're probably talking anywhere from 55 to 75 million for the plant, just construction of the new plant, not operation or maintenance. Plus, you're going to have to have probably three to five full-time employees just to operate that plant. So at the end of the day, it just doesn't make sense. And then, or where do, would you discharge the effluent of that plant? They're not going to allow you to discharge it into the lakes. It'd be more probably a groundwater kind of a thing. So it's going to even more, more expense on that. So that's just, that's a whole southern, a lot of meetings had to have, to have those conversations. So you have some background why we go to the Met Council sewer interceptor line.
Those plants are stacked up deep when it comes to state bonding, because also the, the maintenance of them is incredibly expensive.
And it's going to take up a large area of land and something big to not aesthetically look at.
Quick question. The public works facility, the sewer fund is carrying a heavier load of that than the water fund. Any particular reason?
It can afford to.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the main reason, can afford to, but the numbers not having a solid number on there. It says we need a placeholder for it at this point. Once we get that go ahead and go down that road of construction for that public works facility, it'll be looked at, it'll be looked at closely. But yeah, the sewer fund could absorb some of that, that brunt a little bit more. And it just really goes to, is it water, is it sewer? It's all, it's all falls through the rate, the sustainability rates, so. Um, if no questions on that, we're go to the last one, which is the surface water management fund. So with that, there was, just like the water fund, the 2024 rates are currently approved at a 6% increase. And currently, those are being proposed, are still being proposed at a 6% increase over the next 10 years. Same story with the expenses, wages and benefits, and the, and other operating expenditures are projected at a 3% increase for wages and a 2% for operating. The one thing in this fund is that currently, there is a new position that is, that was proposed, and it's currently being analyzed by staff, that would be partly funded with this fund. Currently, we would, we have that fund 75% of the expense going into the surface water management fund, and then 25% of it going into the street fund. So this, the, the information that, that's on your dais in front of you does have that position in there. It is being currently still looked at, but wanted to at least present that to council to kind of give a picture of what that, this fund would look like with that, with that position in there. And we, we'll come back at, and at a later time to, with our recommendation for that position. So the surface water management fund is the last page of your packet. This one, this has one page. So the revenues are, the revenues and the charges for services are projected to be at that 6% increase. When we go down to this fund and looking at the cash balance, fund balance, and how that relates to the over/under, you can see that this fund with that new position in there is, is not going to be hitting the mark, given the current rate structure of that 6% increase over the next 10 years. You can see, starting in about 2028, 2029, this fund would run into some issues at the current proposed rate increases, and if that new position is put in there. So with that being said, that's why staff is still looking at that to see if this is a position that's needed at this time, if it should be, if it should be in the 2024 proposed budget, and it'd be part of discussion, or even possibly looking at some of the ways this fund does fund some of the equipment purchases. You can see down below, there's a couple street sweepers planned to be purchased in 2026, and then 2030, 2031. To help this fund out without having significant increases, is there another way that the city can fund maybe significant capital requirements in this fund? So those are some of the discussions that are still going on internally for how we want to look at this fund, plan for this fund, fund this, plan for funding for this surface water management fund in the future. But this one, to give that picture of what's being currently looked at with this fund and, and the current state.
Kevin, you said that this fund, this fund is on an annual rate increase that we, and we, that's been a shift. I think, was there a point in time not too long ago where we just had a fixed amount that, I think was frozen for a number of years, and we didn't take adjustments? Is that, am I remembering that right?
It was frozen at whatever rate it was for, since I think it was implemented, and then we finally started to get it back.
Was it $25? And then we increased it to $40? And now we've kind of committed to it?
It, it was, it was bankrupting the fund. It was going nowhere. We couldn't do anything with it. I, I don't, when was the stormwater put in? Anybody?
2008 or 9?
So around 2008, and that stayed the same until 2020 or 21.
Right. I, I, I bring that up because I think every time we've talked about this number, as we've looked at our rates versus some neighboring cities, I think we continue to be really low on those rates. And if this is an opportu, and, and I think we've also been, over the years, asking this fund to do more and more. And so with that, that dynamic, if there is an opportunity for us to do something differently with rates, that's more aggressive, that maybe brings us closer to in line with what some of our neighboring communities are doing. And if that helps provide some, eases some of the burden on the general fund, I, I think that's a conversation worth having.
Yeah, we can look, we can, we can take a look and see what other rates are doing with our comparables and other.
Am I remembering that right? That, are we, are we still even at our current rates? Pretty low?
Yeah, I haven't gotten, do you usually send out a?
Seen that myself.
We haven't gotten it yet, but usually, probably sometime pretty soon. Now that you said it, it'll probably be in the mail tomorrow. But then they, they give us a nice graph of where you lie within, you know, other metro cities. And even after our raise two years ago, we were like a third from the bottom.
Right.
So it's relatively low for what, what we're maintaining.
I think part of, for us is the challenge of just, it, it's a universal rate that everybody pays, whether you're a user of the sewer fund or not. And so I think there's always just a little bit of education on what the fund does and why everyone's being charged that rate. But there is real value that's coming out of this fund that directly impacts lake quality and all sorts of great things that I, I, I just worry that we're still maybe overly reliant on some general fund. Other cities have shifted this, to this reason, and have moved to that rate structure. And I think we might be still a little bit behind the curve.
Yeah, the other concern with this fund, as Kevin mentioned, was the fund balance starts to go negative in '28. The other thing we need to look at, Kevin mentioned, looking at buying or paying for the, for the capital equipment in a different manner. The other thing that's not included here is the possibility of getting grants for the street sweeper. That could be, the one we have now, I believe, was paid for by a grant. We will absolutely pursue that, but the revenue's not shown in this because it's never a sure thing. So that may change the dynamics of this fund if we were to take $400,000 off the, the table by getting a grant to pay for the street sweeper. So again, that's the importance of reviewing this every year and, and going for the grant when we're ready to go and, and seeing how that affects the bottom line here. You never want one of your funds to go into negative if you can avoid it.
So a little history on the rate set. It was $40 a year back in 2015, and then the next rate increase was in 2021, up to $12 a quarter, so $48 a year. So it went six, about six years or so without any shifts in rates or anything like that. And that's really where we're looking at this, where going that long without a rate increase and not looking at the future and the plan of this fund, playing, playing some catch up with those rates instead of maybe having the, more of a gradual increase, now having to be a little more heavy on those projections.
Go ahead. Question on the, that potential new position. Is that taking someone, something from Public Works budget and just being a, not just, but a sweet, a street sweeper? Is that the position for this?
No, but that's kind of why a position needs to be there, more or less, because the, the one stormwater position is getting eaten up by the guy running the street sweeper every day. So, you know, just more stuff to inspect, more maintenance and all that, that we're taking the bleed over from a parks worker, a streets guy that's doing stormwater work, where it's, you got to kind of level that out. You're losing hours in one department because they're picking up in this, this department or that kind of work. So it's trying to even that out the best you can. I mean, it's never going to be perfect when you're all one big department, but you're trying to at least match up your time with, with what you're doing.
Other points of feedback for the surface water fund?
He answered the question about the, the extra position. I just wanted, I was going to ask exactly what it was all about, because it really was unexplained. So that's all I had.
We have a lot of requirements now with our MS4. I mean, we have to inspect 25% of our 150-plus ponds every year. We have the street sweeping to do. We have all the culvert inspections, catch basin cleaning. There's just all these things every year that you renew your permit, you get added on more tasks. So it's just never-ending, more difficult tasks and more stuff to do, so.
Yeah.
And you'll see a better explanation when we present the budget and all.
Except being another member of Public Works is what you're, what it amounts to.
Yep. So you gain a plow driver. So, you know, in the wintertime, you gain that, or more efficient in the wintertime as well.
Great. Anything else budget-related for us this evening?
Well, that wraps up what I had for you. Unless you have any other further questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Let's move into staff updates. Karen, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I do not have any updates this evening.
And Patrick?
I just have one item just to let you know. In the next council meeting and the discussion format, we will be talking about cannabis and some regulations we should start to look at immediately. Basically, a regulation that follows our tobacco ordinance and no smoking in public, no smoking in the parks, things like that, and other things. We'll be discussing that internally and bringing back that discussion to the council. Rochester just banned any, any sales of it for, until '25. I think there's a moratorium period that the statute allows you to do that. I'm sure they're doing that to wait for the state regulations to come forward in '24, but we will have a discussion item next time.
Thank you, Patrick. Amanda?
Hi, thank you, Your Honor. Actually, to piggyback off of that, yes, the, the biggest news that just came out of the Office of Cannabis Management is that they will not have everything online until 2025. We were told initially they would have licensing ready to go in 2024. So as you're thinking about it for next council, our current moratorium expires this fall. And so we'll want to think about if we want to extend that, expand that, or, or what we want to do based on the fact that there won't be anything from the state until 2025.
Understood. And our current moratorium covers products that are now legalized under the revised?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Help me with, help, help me with the definition of what that moratorium covers?
Uh, so it's complicated. The, what's currently legal are, are edibles, essentially, so, so not smoking or vaping products until August 1. And then August 1, pretty much everything is going to be legal to consume, but not legal to sell. And that's sort of the disconnect is that you can consume it, but, but you can't sell it in, in the state without a license. And the state isn't going to be issuing license until 2025. So there's this, what we had thought was maybe going to be a six-month awkwardness is turning into more of like an 18-month awkwardness. So.
Is anyone directly addressing that awkwardness of, like, it was, in the news that has recently come out, is there a, an interim suggestion? Or?
Uh, well, that's why they are allowing cities to do the moratorium to, and then that would be to, you know, not be able, because you're not supposed to be able to sell anything. Although, there's new guidance that says if you were selling the edibles.
Right.
You know, so there's, there's edibles that were allowed in the 2022 session. That is going to expire in 2025. It's going to be repealed in 2025. They've made some changes to various definitions in that section for this sort of interim period. And then 2025 is when hypothetically, all of this licensing and sort of state regulating will onboard. In the interim, if a city wants to license these hemp-based 2022 uses, we could. I'm, I'm not sure that I would be advising that, but I can certainly look into that if it's something that council wants. Largely because we don't have the resources that it would be, would be required to actually effectively license and determine if they're meeting their required, you know, the requirements for the right type of stuff that they'd be selling, the products. That's the, the trickiest thing. And I would defer to the police, you know, far more on, on public safety on that. But I know that it's incredibly difficult to sort of manage the, what are you allowed to sell in those gummies? And are those gummies actually, you know, containing what you say they contain?
And so the moratorium that we have on the edibles that were kind of the 2022 allowed substance, that continues and expires until this fall. And so I think maybe what I'm hearing that council might need to consider is how might we, do we allow that to expire? Do, what do we, what do we do with that in light of an update of what the state's prepared or not prepared to do here in the near term?
Yes, Your Honor. That, that's accurate. And then in light of the fact that now everything Yes, Your Honor, that that's accurate. And then in light of the fact that now everything is, you know, there's all of these new cannabis products that are not that are legal for consumption, but not legal to sell.
Questions. So we had a couple of months ago, an applicant or not an applicant, but a current provider in the city that was confused by wanting to move and the that gets straightened out and she's up and running. Do you recall that?
I think they're still running in their original location. They could not move to where they wanted to move. It was there was some prohibition. I think they had a distance issue there. And they did it after they I think it was after the moratorium or?
Their their distance issue was actually triggered by the tobacco ordinance because vaping, right? That that was what if they were just selling edibles, that wouldn't have been a problem for them. The issue was that they wanted to be able to sell vapes and smokeless products. My understanding was they weren't THC. They must have been like CBD or something, but they wanted that coverage. And that's what sort of was precluding them. So they were sort of a unique case. Yeah, my understanding is that they're in their current location and they just didn't move.
And then one other question on that. So if we're going to be talking not on that, but as far as our next agenda item, let's say come Tuesday, people are out smoking in the public is how is how is how are we going to control nothing?
There's no no prohibition against smoking those products in the park.
In the park too, what that would just be on just because normal smoking is considered the same as?
But I'm not sure that we can make an enforcement. Amanda's going to tell me we probably can, but I'm not sure if we can do that.
Your Honor, counsel. So the the statute, I think it's like 300 and some pages. This thing is a is a bit of a monster. It it's it's it says that it's only legal in certain places and it lists these places. They're private spaces. So it's your property, right? Anywhere on your property. It's in a private establishment that is allowing you. So you have permission by the property owner. Or it's a establishment that has a license for onsite consumption, which those licenses won't exist until 2025. So it's a it's not allowed in public because it's not one of the listed, which is really, really impossible for the police to write a ticket based on that statute. And it's sort of not really designed for ticket writing. So cities, in fact, I just sent this to a different city today, an ordinance that clearly states you're not allowed to consume this in public spaces. And that can be construed to be as narrowly as, you know, property that the city owns, parks, sidewalks, or that can also include public space spaces that are private places where the public is generally assumed to be welcome. So that's going to be at, you know, the front, a gas station, the area there where you're assumed the public is welcome to be at a gas station, right? And so we can expand that definition under the law as much or as little as frankly, I would I want the chief to weigh in on what he needs to be effective. And then that's what we would write it for.
And those so until we pass that, I from what I'm hearing, our enforcement options are fairly limited?
Yes, they are. If it's something that's not a complicated ordinance at all, if that's something that you want on the next agenda so we can get that rolling, that's something that I can certainly do.
I I think so personally, I would benefit from seeing that ordinance as soon as possible, as soon as what's feasible to put that together. I think to get that in front of council for consideration is prudent, given the timeframe we're talking about. We've already have already received a number of resident inquiries. Police are going to, I can imagine, are going to be kind of inundated with questions and complaints. And it doesn't mean that we need to adopt it the first time we see it, but if we could have that in front of us to consider what our options are, I think that would be prudent. And if that's possible before our next council meeting, I think I would be supportive of of that approach, but very open to feedback.
Yes, per se. I guess I mean, the one thing I'd want us to be careful of is not, I don't think we've talked about this, but I mean, limit the current establishments that are actively operating legally, right? I mean, so no unintended consequences.
Yeah, this is public use. So that wouldn't, I mean, you can sell it, but you can't consume it in those shops anyway. So the consumption use is different than the shops that are selling the CBD or the Delta products. And because we have a fifth Monday, this there isn't an issue with being able to get notice and those kinds of things. So we can get it ready for you guys for the first meeting in August.
Excellent. Very good. I also just I didn't say this and these words should come out of my mouth, like let's take into account certainly public safety's feedback and what, you know, chief, what you would like to see in that type of an ordinance, what's actually enforceable. And then we should probably consider a fair amount of just communication, right? Public's going to have a lot of questions. And so whatever we can do to get information out, obviously. But certainly there's some policy decisions we need to make as council first before we can be communicating what that might be. So just not follow the model of the state of do things and figure it out later. Let's be a little bit more upfront if we can. Okay. Anything else for Amanda? Very good. Thank you. Dave?
I just want to update. We did not get through extreme drought conditions. So we're not doing a watering ban, but most you probably saw that St. Cray watershed put on watering restrictions. So it's basically voluntarily trying to reduce water. So we're just going to kind of do our ad campaign with their reader boards and try to get on some messaging just to remind people of odd even watering. We're not very close or very far away from 50% of January, which would be 1.5 million we could be using. So we're at 1.8, 1.9. So we're not too far off of that if we needed to go to a watering ban. So that's really don't want people to have to quit watering if they want to have a nice yard. So we're not that far away. So we're just going to try to do some education and hopefully bring that number down a couple hundred thousand gallons a day and we should be fine that way. But if we get an extreme drought or if we don't get any rain, we might have to be forced to do that ban. But I'll keep you posted.
When the signs are strictly enforced, that odd even, who's enforcing that and what what is that penalty or how does that?
So we're going to have public works. We'll come in early, some mornings, some odd even, odd mornings, even mornings. And we have a little notice of violation thing. And your first one's a friendly reminder that you you're an odd number house and it's an even day type of a deal. And then states there's fines after that if you, you know, don't adhere to it. But I think last the two years ago when we had that, I don't think we had any people that actually got fined. It was all just morning tickets. So it's and a lot of people, they don't, they drive by the sign 10 times a day and actually never read it and stuff like that. So it's sometimes it's the door hanger, you know, when they're walking in the door that catches their eye. So.
Ryan?
Mayor said to council, just a friendly reminder, we have an open house number three for the county stated Highway 33 or 11th Avenue, August 21, 4:30 to 6:30 prior to our city council workshop that night.
What day are the times on that again?
4:30 PM to 6:30 PM. Generally, they're here probably about four o'clock setting up. If you got any questions you would want to ask him prior to the open house starting.
Very good. Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? All right. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, Mayor and City Council members, as you are well aware, our personnel has been extremely busy the past few weeks. I can't get into much detail, of course, because we have two investigations that are still very fluid. But I do want to publicly thank law enforcement agencies who have assisted us. And those are specifically Washington County Sheriff's Office, Shasago County Sheriff's Office, Pine County Sheriff's Office, the Minnesota State Patrol, and a special thank you to the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension. And looking forward, yes, next Tuesday, August 1 is going to be a really interesting day. We have night to a night. And we have 20 block parties that police and fire are going to be visiting. And then, of course, we're going to have a presence at the Arts in the Park. So we're looking forward to that. That's all I have for it unless you have some questions for me.
Questions for chief? Thank you, chief.
Mayor and City Council, it's a quick update. Continuing the trend of the utility funds, the second core utility bills have gone out. So residents have either received those via email if they're signed up for that, or will be in their mailboxes shortly. So we just encourage them to contact us via email or the phone number on those bills if they have any questions or concerns about their bill.
Very good. Thank you, Kevin. All right, let's move to council updates and we'll start with Councilmember Roberts.
No updates tonight.
Councilmember Valento?
Nothing from me tonight.
Councilmember Hussinck?
I have nothing to update tonight.
Councilmember Erickson?
Just attended the Forest Lake Area Chamber of Commerce golf tournament yesterday. It was a fantastic success. The team at the chamber just did an outstanding job. We had a full house, Brian and Adam over there just crushing it. And no, it was just great to see so many people come out and so many businesses join in.
Very good. Just a quick update for me. Just prior to our council meeting, Councilmember Roberts and I had a meeting with City Administrator Patrick, a meeting of the Personnel Committee just to talk about a lot of the upcoming staffing adjustments and changes and potential lot of moving pieces potentially for this next budget session. So just had a discussion of what that plan is. Council will see that plan when it comes forward as part of the budget. Successful meeting, good opportunities for some feedback. And again, more to come for council when we see that budget come forward. And that is it for my update as well. That being the end of our planned agenda this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye, aye, oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.